Good morning. Today is Tuesday, October the 10th, and this is the Management and Internal Services Committee meeting. On the meeting to order, and I'd like to start with invocation, if you'll join me, please. Well, thank you for this day and this beautiful weather we're having. Thank you for the people in this room and the opportunity to gather and the rights to assemble and to govern ourselves. Be with us today as we go through this agenda and these items that we have to consider. I know some of these items are difficult decisions and they affect not only us, but our neighbors, our friends, and our community. Be with us to help us make decisions in fairness and in truth. In your name we pray, amen. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America.
Thank you. We'll proceed with this meeting with a full quorum, all three members of this committee being present. Gentlemen, you have the minutes of the last meeting in front of you. May I have an approval, please?
Motion to approve.
Agreed.
Thank you so much. Do we have any changes to the agenda, Mr. Slaughter?
I do not believe so, Madam Chair.
Very good. I don't have any formal presentations, but we do have a few folks from Leadership Columbia County with us. Will y'all please stand up and tell us who you are and where you work? And we're so happy to have you. Let's start down here. Very good. Thank you so much for being with us. We hope you learned something today. At the end, if you have questions, please, please let one of us know. We'd love to, we'd love to speak with you. I don't have anything on the consent agenda, moving directly into debate. Let's see, our first item has to do with the December committee meetings running into the Christmas holidays.
Yes, ma'am. We are asking to move all of our committee meetings to December 12th. That will allow us to hold our final commission meeting on the 19th, I believe, and not have committees on December 26th, which is a holiday.
Move to consent.
Agreed.
So moved. Thank you. Next?
Next one is a board appointment of Troy Akers to the Columbia County Health Department. Staff has recommended approval.
Agreed.
So moved. Next.
First to have is two service agreements, one with Concerned Women, Inc., and one with Marshall Scholarship Foundation, $2,000 each. Recommend approval.
Move to consent.
Agreed.
Thank you. So moved. I do have a question. On the scholarship fund, is that for all Columbia County students? Or is it limited to particular? All students?
All of us.
Thank you. Next?
This we have for you is Resolution 2351. This is an amendment to the fee schedule of the Columbia County Health Department. The Health Department voted to set these fees. However, state law requires that this body, the full board, actually approve those fees. So this resolution will set those fees. Staff has recommended this to debate the agenda for our first reading.
Move to debate.
Agreed.
So moved. Thank you. Do you have any, do you have anything else under new business, Mr. Slaughter? Let's move to Internal Services, please.
Good morning. Yes, the only item I have for you this morning is the budget adjustment that is required for our fiscal year-end June 30 audit. The State Department of Audits does require that all departments be shown within their budget with, on the financial statement. So I have attached for you a list of the departments within the general fund and then any other funds that needed a budget adjustment. And I have researched as to why this is needed and provided an explanation for you.
No, the overall budget didn't change. It was just moving from one pocket to another.
Move to consent.
Agreed.
So moved. Thank you. Do you have anything else for us?
That's it.
Thank you. Technology Services.
Yes, ma'am. I have a few agenda items for you today. The first is a technology consulting and services agreement with HARP Engineering. From time to time, the county IT department has, I'll say, new projects that come up, areas in which, even though they're highly qualified, they may not have expertise in certain areas of technology. So what we'd like to do is bring HARP Engineering on. They have a particular set of skills in technology, a lot of various skills in certain areas where they can provide consulting work for us. Additionally, they're a local firm and they can command local and remote resources to address our needs. Typically, we definitely deal with companies out of Atlanta or elsewhere for this. HARP is a local firm with a lot of, they do have experience at local and federal level in providing the kind of support we're looking for. This agreement's for ad hoc services, so there's no outlay of county funds that are tied to the agreement. We'll just engage them on an as-needed basis throughout the year. Staff recommends approval.
With an hourly rate?
There is an hourly rate and... Paul?
65 for junior and 95 for senior, and SME is 2.
Kind of consulting?
Several different areas of consulting. I mean, we could ask them questions about network infrastructure, beyond what we could ask one of our other consultants. If we have area concerns about PCIDSS, you know, credit cards?
I don't know what that means.
Okay. They have contacts in that area. They're, it's a firm with a lot of local, I'm sorry, but they've done defense work before, so they have a lot of security expertise. They have, I mentioned, networking experience. They do, they do policy writing. They do wireless security, wireless network configuration, sign, a little bit of everything. We just, we want somebody we can lean on when we have a knee that's not going to try and just sell us equipment to solve a problem.
Are cash limit to this?
Being the budget, so you?
It'll, yeah. Everything, everything that we would do with them, we'd already have requested in the budget as a project. Unless there is an ad hoc need, and in that case, we would cover it. We would not come back and ask for more money to do a project with HARP.
On page 38, the hourly rates list SME. That's Seratimatics Evans? Or what is SME?
Service matter.
Matter expert.
Subject matter expert, yes, ma'am.
Oh, gotcha. Sorry. That's my accounting brain.
So if we wanted them to look at our, the way we have our PCIDSS, which is our credit card security, then we would call them and say, "Do you have a PCIDSS expert on staff?" They'd say, "Yes," and we'd arrange for that engagement. And we'd, of course, confirm first that we have that funding in the budget.
Gentlemen, are there any further questions? I have a motion to send it to the consent agenda.
Move to consent.
Agreed.
So moved. Thank you.
Right. Next item I have for you is Resolution Number 23-52 to authorize the deputy county manager or the broadband manager to sign an indefeasible right-of-use agreement. A good case in point for this was at our October, I'm sorry, the September, M.I.S. We had a small IRU with, with the gentry fund. It was a three-year agreement for one strand of fiber, and the income coming into us was negligible. However, they are an existing customer, somebody we built a relationship with, and they do contribute a good bit to our bottom line throughout the year. Therefore, what we're asking is that when we have these, these small agreements that come up for the small amounts, less than a three-year agreement, we'd like to have the county manager or the broadband manager be able to sign off on those. Reason for that is that often with these smaller companies, if they have a customer that they want to work with and they, they contract for they want to work with Mr. Sparrow and our broadband in order to set up the agreement, we can say, "Well, sure, we can do that with you, but we just missed our committee cycle, and it's going to be another five, six weeks, however long, worst-case scenario, before we can get it before the board." In that time period, we have, may have lost them to Comcast or Wow or someone like that.
Or rate increase. So you said three years, but you said a small amount. Define small amount. I don't see it at all.
I was going to ask, are there limits on this?
The way we'd like to approach that is, that's why the county manager is involved. We want to let them know, here's the terms of the agreement, and then they would essentially be able to say, "Well, that one really needs to go to the board." If it was anything that was over Mr. Johnson's approval authority, then certainly it would come before the board. If, if it was like the last one we had that was only $1,800, and, and that would be revenue over a three-year period, then that would be something that'd be in agreement on that, that you don't necessarily need to wait weeks and weeks and weeks to do that. Go ahead and sign off on it. And if you desire for us to report back to you quarterly or biannually, happy to. We'll make sure that we can serve our customers quickly.
Trying to think past Scott, God forbid.
It is revenue, isn't it?
Oh, I understand that. Oh, no, I understand. I'm thinking past Scott. God forbid something happened to Scott and there's somebody else in the seat that could give these things away, potentially. They have the authority to.
Well, I understand the premise of this. I think it needs further discussion. Gentlemen, can we move this to the debate agenda?
Sure.
And take it up next?
Sure.
Agreed.
Thank you. So moved. Next?
Next item I have for your consideration is an MOU between GMA and the Georgia, GMA and Homeland Security Agency and Columbia County for the State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program. In this month, GMA is going to be releasing funds that were provided to them by the federal government for cybersecurity grants. According to GMA, we have to have an MOU on file for this specific kind of grant. So they provided the grant. It's very similar, I mean, practically word for word with one that was approved a couple of years ago for, for some other EMA-related grants. And we can't apply for these grants without having this MOU. So it's put forth for your consideration. Staff recommends approval.
Agreed.
So moved. Next?
Next item I have is an agreement with Clarity Cloud, Inc., and Implementation Services Agreement with Unisys for permitting and licensing. This is a, I'm surprised you didn't mention, this is fairly expensive.
We haven't gotten to it yet.
It's something that, it's essential. We're currently using Unis from Tyler Technologies to support our permitting and licensing activities, which includes plan review, building permits, inspections, land disturbance permits, wideaway encroachment permits, business licenses. So there's a lot that's encompassed in this particular area of technology. Tyler has made the corporate decision that they're not going to do significant upgrades to their products. What they have chosen to do instead is they're going to purchase other companies and market those to their customers. So when we approached them about upgrading our current Unis product, making it better, making it where the front end that the customers see is more like what you expect from a high-quality website, they said, "Oh, well, you need to move up to our next product," which means we have to buy something new from them in order to accomplish this. Staff looked at the offering that they had in order to handle permits and licensing. It didn't seem like it was quite ready for prime time, so we worked with the procurement department and we had a, I'll say, an exhaustive process. Some of the folks that served on the committee are in the room right now. We had a long set of system requirements. Watched many, many, many hours of demonstrations. There was a lot of debate about how we wanted to move forward. And at the end of all that, we've settled on a, on a software called Clarity. Now, there's, there's two companies at play. Clarity does not implement their own software, so if we want to use the Clarity software, then we work with Unisys, who would be the implementer. So what they're going to provide for us is, has greatly enhanced workflow capabilities. It means we would have visibility on a process from the time that the permit was requested in the field or in the community from a builder, or by the time a subdivision was submitted for approval. We'd be able to track that all the way through. We would not have any extra or ancillary programs, and that's one of the problems we have now, is that in order to extend the capabilities of our current system, staff has to use Excel spreadsheets, and they have to do other things because we've really outgrown the current Unis product. So they have a new customer interface. It has information dashboards, reporting, and mobile capabilities as well. So it expands a lot of what we're able to do in many different departments.
But this would be information sharing across all the departments that need to know?
Yes, ma'am.
When somebody comes, says, "Hey, get the permit," then, you know, inspections folks know, licensing, all the, all the departments have it on their radar, so hopefully people don't fall through the cracks when they come in to start a process. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am. This has notification processes. It has dashboards. Matt would be able to look at it. Scott would be able to look at it and see where things were in different departments.
The customer with the, the citizen who's getting the permit would be able to look at it as well.
Yes.
So what all software would we be able to get rid of?
We'd be able to get rid of, of certain modules within Unis.
Not maintaining Unis, are we?
That's, that's Leanne's financial database.
So we're going to pay for two systems?
We're, we're trying to use a financial system to do other things, and it's not working. That's our problem. We're trying to force Unis to do something that's not really tailored to do. Done that for many years, and it doesn't work. We finally found a solution. Michael said, we had a, over a year, we've been looking at questions galore. We've had demonstrations. This system works. The biggest thing that I see that the public will notice is forward-facing. It's web-based, so if you want a contract, you can follow the process from your cell phone the entire way through. You'll get notifications. You can build in parameters into the application process so that you cannot apply for something you're not eligible for. So if you want to put a commercial building on a residential lot, it won't let you apply. It'll tell you from the very beginning, "Sorry, you cannot do this." There's the next person. So fix some of the problems you've seen in the past with, with people getting permission to do things they shouldn't have been given permission to do. Formed real-time, they know when, when, when water utility finishes looking at a set of plans, they know what water utility is, is looked at. They, they...
But what are we replacing?
We don't have anything to replace.
Well, we do. We have, the, the modules that, that we have in Unis that do this right now have, they're, they have not changed in, in really the last 15 years. It's very rudimentary, very basic, but there's not really a comparison between that and what we're going to go to.
How much in-person training you get? Sorry, I'm going through this in my paid life right now. I've gone through three system changes on a large scale. And one thing that I'm very impressed with is a software company's ability to sell teachers' benefits, and it turns into a very painful experience. Get there. And so I hear all these great words, but see, I'm personally going through it right now, and it's...
Painful.
I want to throw the BS flag, and that's a 15-yard major penalty.
I've been through some very painful software implementations myself. I promise you that. The, the people that I've talked to from other agencies have had nothing but good things to say about Unisys and their...
They're the people that they told us to talk to, right? Or did you get references outside of the...
One of them was, was not a reference. It was an outside agency. So it was not somebody they told us to talk to. The, I, I hear what you're saying about training. That's one of the most important things that you can do going into any software venture. They will have onsite training.
Are you going to bring data forward from our current system?
We will. We will be bringing everything forward so that if, if a company got a...
Have an open API soon?
They do. And that's what we're going to be using in order to develop the connections we'll need to Unis in order to make sure that Reese gets her money.
Who all was on that committee? What departments were represented?
The departments that were represented, Stormwater was represented. Katie Beth was on, on the committee. Aaron Hall and Vanessa Simmons were on the committee. Will Butler was on the committee, and Paula Munger was on the committee. Those were the, the folks that were part of the decision-making process. I can't say enough about how much work they did and how much I appreciate it. They, they threw their heart and their soul into it because they understood the, the importance and the gravity of what we're trying to do.
I went through a two-year process of that same thing. I'm still waiting on the one report I asked for in May. Not from here. So I'm just saying, you know, I just, they're very fresh, open wounds.
And it's, it's ironic that you mentioned that. That's one of the things that Unis has not really developed over the years, is their reporting capabilities. You put information into Unis, they haven't really developed the capability to get information out. And I think unanimously, the, the committee would agree that you put stuff into Clarity, and it's either going to be reflected in a dashboard, or you can create a report to get that information out.
How old is Clarity?
Clarity, the oldest reference I talked to, they'd implemented it in 2013. So it's, it's at least that old. I don't remember specifically when the company was founded.
My advice to you, again, very fresh on this subject, don't underestimate, regardless of how antiquated Unis may be, don't underestimate how the, how the whole government has integrated, is used to that system, is working that system. Have the build workarounds and it makes it work for them. Don't underestimate how disruptive it can be.
It's hard.
Oh, this is...
Well, we have a number of, of different programs that we use for different functions.
About five pages worth.
We absolutely tried that, and it does not work.
We are, but they have, there's different needs. And a lot of the areas, you mentioned CityWorks specifically. CityWorks is a spectacular order and asset management tool. When the committee, the committee did look at CityWorks to be able to solve this need, and Clarity was a better solution for them. With, with Clarity, you're not necessarily worried about the, the assets, assets themselves. You're worried about the, the building permits, the, the workflow, the, the record keeping. We looked at several other companies as well that all do similar things. This is, this is one of the things that, that obviously I watch the software industry extensively, and the, where there used to be companies like Tyler, Tyler Technologies, they're, it's Unis. They built an ERP, and they sold the ERP to their customers and said, "This will do everything that you want it to do." And...
That's the first statement. You should run.
Exactly, exactly. Because what happened over time is they realized, "Well, that's not really very profitable for us, so let's go buy this other company and this other company." And instead, they, they put their software in different tiers. So you have a lower-tier solution, you have mid-tier, and you have upper-tier solutions. And based on the, the needs you have, they make those recommendations now. They don't try to sell you one overall system that does everything. They, they really fragment it, and that's, that's the way the software industry goes.
Clarity does not have bolt-on segments to, to what we're buying. It's all Clarity. It's not, "We bought this company a year ago, and they plugged in this solution." It's not a hodgepodge of solutions bought and plugged in.
Clarity, the earliest reference that I spoke to, they implemented in 2013, and they've been on it steadily for those 10 years. I know that they have acquired other companies, but they've integrated that with their solution. They haven't, they haven't split out and said, "Oh, we're going to do this, or we're going to do that," with the difference that I spoke about. That doesn't guarantee that they won't.
Talk to anybody that's implemented within the last 18 months? I would, I would recommend you do that.
No, I've, I've, I've not spoken to them directly, but I've, I've got a, a call with Norfolk, Virginia, take on it. The other companies that I've spoke to have been longer-term users.
Their, their systems are going to be more integrated.
Well, and it depends...
I would talk to folks that, that, over the short term, what was, what the support was like, what the...
Support was...
I'm not asking, forgive me, I'm not asking you a question. I'm just, I'm giving you advice that I have experienced, that I have learned over the last...
Right. Well, everyone I have spoken to, I can't answer the question, has said that the service this company provides is outstanding, and that's something that I can't currently say about our, our current provider. We've, we've had to take them to task multiple times about things that we thought were very basic operations. Reese is nodding because she's been at the table while we've experienced this.
Mr. Reese, were you on the committee to help select this?
I was not.
Have you reviewed it? Do you feel comfortable with it?
I trust my IT people that if it will integrate with Unis, I trust that it will.
Answer. What's the implementation timeline for this project?
They expect, if we get approval, well, I guess the 17th, then they're expecting this will be anywhere from a nine to a 12-month implementation, so midsummer of next year.
Are the subdivisions or PUDs or buildings or projects construction-wise already in progress? Will they, will you finish them up with the old system, or they'll be, change horses midstream with them?
We'll have to change horses midstream on them.
Have a hard cutoff date?
There will be a hard cutoff date. But we, like Chairman had said, we have a...
Couldn't have to run a parallel system.
Got to make sure everybody's trained, and then we'll convert. Typically, we go through multiple stages of conversions on these projects. The last one will bring all the current data over as of a certain date, and then we'll live on the new system. By that time, everybody will have been trained, and we'll...
Careful, that's a really big statement.
I know it is. I know it is. And that's, that's one of the ones that, that I, I do my darnedest to hold our vendors to, simply because it is...
I would ask for five times as much in-person training.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to put this on the debate agenda and have time to further investigate it and answer your questions?
Not necessarily. It just, it makes me, it makes me shudder when I see a, a large, not, it's not about the money. It's about just the actual implementation.
Have the list of people on the committee, and if the users are unhappy, we'll send them to Katie Beth and Will and Michael.
I, I think that once this is implemented, the, our, our outside customers, the business community, community is going to be thrilled with it.
They will be very happy.
I, I know when speaking to staff that has sat through these demonstrations and sat through all the questions, and they're here, they can speak for themselves, but they were very excited. Possibility. I think this is going to make their job so much easier, streamlined, takes...
The building community will be happy when, if, if it works the way we think it's going to, they will be very happy. Gentlemen, do we have a motion?
Move to consent.
Agreed.
So moved. Thank you.
With a warning.
Okay. Mr. Blanchard, now what?
The final item I have for you is an agreement with Presidio for upgrades to the county computer network. Back in April, I believe, we extended Presidio. They're our, our current Cisco hardware provider and licensing provider. We, we extended them for one year because we had a couple of projects that were in the hopper. There was a phase-one network upgrade and then a phase-two network upgrade. This is the phase-two network, network upgrade. So this is really the last of these projects that you're going to see. Hopefully, the last time for a while I come up asking for money for network upgrades.
I'm going to hold you to that.
I don't believe it.
They've recommended that we need to make significant upgrades to several components of our network, particularly our network core, which is really the, they're the, our network switches that do the heavy lifting for the network. The work...
Cycle them? Do we cycle those?
We do. We do. So this is really...
And then we're on plan with the, with all the equipment you're talking about here?
The, the equipment that we're going to be changing out here is, most, most of it is nearing end of life. So it's something that we'll have to replace anyway. It's part of our life cycle replacement.
That's what I was asking. This is part of, so we're on that schedule. This is not off that schedule.
Right.
And this is in the budget?
Uh, no, this is, we have, this is being paid for through TAVT ARPA funds to the tune of, it's $737,434.34 altogether. So the, the availability of those funds means that we don't have to impact IT's capital budget.
Right. But so if it's on a replacement cycle, it would have been budgeted. But it's not on the, it's not budgeted. Is it, or is it not?
It is, it is budgeted in ARPA funds. It's not budgeted in Michael's IT funds. We're able to use the ARPA funds that came in through COVID, but in that budget versus putting in Michael's budget.
So it's in, so this is a budgeted, not, I got it.
Probably a year ago, Leanne was when we put this money in.
The Dell inform, the Dell equipment, that's mostly desktops, and they have a shorter life. These, these... Colin McCarterl is here. Colin, do you want to up and talk a little bit about that?
Come on up here so we can hear you.
Come on down.
Sorry.
Cisco equipment generally is five, five to 10 years. It depends on, larger switches. Smaller switches.
Questions, gentlemen? Do we have a motion?
Move to consent.
Second. So moved. This will be moved to the consent. Thank you so much. Mr. Blanchard, is there any other money you'd like to spend today?
No, ma'am. I'm satisfied.
Very good. Thank you. I would hope so. Uh, do we have any other committee reports today? And none, let's, uh, move down to legal matters. No legal matters. Staff reports, uh, personnel savings.
You've saved some money.
Good news.
Yes, ma'am. You'll see the attached report showing our personnel savings year-to-date.
Which saving money is a good news, but it also means that we're short people and that means the folks who are here are working twice as hard to fill those slots, so. Gotta, gotta fill some of these, some of these, um, jobs.
Resignations in September.
Had some, uh, some retirements in there as well, I believe.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't count those retirements.
I'm moving down to internal services. The budget report, please.
Yes, the first report I have for you is the year-to-date budget report. This is for the month ended September thirtieth. Uh, we should be operating around twenty-five percent of our budget. And despite all of the money that Mr. Blanchard has spent, we are all well within our budgets.
It's very close. It's very good. All right, we're all picking on you today, Michael. Um, all right. And the SWAST update?
Yes, this is for the month of August. We received just over two-point-eight million dollars. Uh, if you recall, last month, we had, were notified that we had collected an audit adjustment of about five hundred thousand. So I have separated that out of your report so that you can see what the truth annual growth rate is for SWAST. Uh, without that funding, our growth rate is two-point-four-eight percent, which is two-point-eleven percent lower than last month, but two and a half percent higher than this same month last year.
I think that's the best measure, year-over-year.
And the investment report?
Yes, the investment summary for the month of August for your review.
Could be, been able to continue to move the low interest, low interest into better interest.
Yes, in fact, we continually, continuously get notified by some of our banks that they're upping our interest rate without us even asking. We just had, I think it was Colony Bank. It's not showing on this report. It will next month. They increased us to. So we're doing well.
Thank you.
Good, good work. Gentlemen, do you have any questions on these reports? There any commissioner or public comment? Public participation? None. I have no items for executive session. Going to adjourn this meeting and we will resume in three minutes for the Development and Planning Services Committee meeting.